Hi Bianca, can you hear us? Don't just frozen and you can still hear us, right?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, Bianca, you're frozen. I can. There you go, you're back. Can you hear us? Thumbs up? Okay, thank you. Very good.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to call the meet, the uh regular meeting of the uh borough's uh planning commission to order at this time. It's uh seven oh two. I'd start with a roll call, just to make sure we have a quorum that everybody's here. My name is Jamie Joyce, I'm the chairman. Uh Christian Gass, Steve Esposito, Anne Bauer. She's remote, but we see you. Uh Tony can't make it, he's on vacation, so he's excused for this meeting. Uh we also have a legal representative that Jake uh sent from his office, Casey Rankin. Uh Scott Fode, our borough manager's here. Bianca is taking uh our borough secretary and she's taking the meeting minutes. And Nancy Ride is our borough liaison, she's here too. Thanks for coming Nancy. Um basically, we do not have meeting minutes, I believe, right Bianca, but perhaps we'll have them by next month. And I ju- I just asked the guys ahead of time, just to try to remember what they did, what what did talk about. There weren't any urgent issues that sounded like they dealt with the St. Ives daycare playground issue. And Edgewater had a res- a minor revision to some of, was it number of buildings or lot lines or what?
Rivers Edge was their seventeenth provision and they did two things. First was uh the brownstone set upon it originally to be nine, three, resets of three.
Yes.
The end in three minutes on either side of the parcel were were contracted. Most were sold, one is a sales room, cell office. The middle parcel instead of having three units was subdivided to create two standalone single-family dwellings.
Oh.
Um lot lines don't change on the on the exterior of those, the furthest wet lots with the same.
And I think they started three on that far side.
Right, they did. They don't fit. What they did was they're gonna do it, so you get a partial three units, two single families, three units.
Same aesthetic.
Same aesthetic, they did elevation, same.
Oh, okay.
The other one in this same project was to relocate the lot line between the Rivers Edge clubhouse swimming pool and the property line for the apartment buildings that just recently completed. Sorry. It was a matter of uh semantics. They, the way it was originally designed with this, the approval will be approved at number sixteen was that the clubhouse property wrapped around that back the side of the apartment complex. And since the apartment complex is now sort of also, not only apartments, but also condominiums inside, they're having their own separate HOA.
Okay.
So homeowners association, so the intent was to not have one homeowners association be able to control the property with another homeowners association.
I got it.
So instead of lying to us, they lie down this day.
Okay. Alright, good.
Council approved both of those applications by permission. They're due in, right, July, July recommended.
Okay. Well, thanks. Thanks for the information. It will formally just approve them next month anyhow. Uh we don't seem to have any unfinished business. Do we have any correspondence that came in?
Nothing.
Anything to deal with? So we could go straight to the new business and we have some representatives here that have a conditional use approval for a proposed home occupation. There's been some issue going on with that back and forth with the the zoning hearing board perhaps. So um if you would like to, uh we have written ones in front of us. Do you guys have written ones in front of you? And if you would like to make a brief presentation, you go right ahead and explain it. Perhaps you can talk to them just that, whether the pair got that in.
Pouring water. Probably a little bit of overlap, but I should be able to go into a little more detail.
You are Brianna Hawkins?
I am.
And you're on twenty-nine first street?
Yes, I was about, I'm.
Sorry.
No, you're taking the words right from my mouth. Okay. Ready? Thank you for the opportunity to speak about my small business for your consideration of my conditional use zoning application. My name is Brianna Hawkins and I'm seeking approval to operate a small personal training business from my home gym located at one twenty-nine first street in Edgewater. I am fully committed to ensuring that my business will remain in compliance with all local zoning laws and regulations while contributing positively to the neighborhood. A little about me, I have a bachelor's of science in exercise rehabilitative sciences. I started exclusively personal training in twenty fifteen. Prior to COVID, I rented space out of a private studio in Shady Side to train my clients. CDC guidelines shut down the space and I shifted my business into an entirely virtual service allowing me to meet with my clients in various online platforms. Recently, reputation and friendships have created demand for in-person individual and small group classes. Basically fellow moms, friends and neighbors encouraged me to offer classes in a friendly and familiar environment. I'd like conditional use approval just to reestablish the in-person element of my business. My primary virtual training business will not change. Conditional use approval will allow me to provide in-person, one-on-one and small group fitness training sessions. These sessions will be tailored to meet the specific needs of my clients, whether focused on general fitness rehabilitation or wellness. Client sessions will be by appointment and schedule only. My goal is to maintain an environment that is welcoming, professional and conducive to effective training. My hours vary as I try to be flexible to accommodate my client needs. I'm requesting this conditional use permit to operate a personal training studio or business in a mixed use zone. I understand the importance of balancing residential character with business operations and feel that my business contributes to finding that balance. The business will operate within my home, in my garage, which was repurposed to a home gym during COVID without any external signage or visible changes to the property. There will be no expansion of the structure, no advertisement, and the business will have minimal to no physical impact on the neighborhood. Most in-person clients are residents of the surrounding Edgewater community and walk to my property ensuring no impact on local traffic or street parking. On rare occasions, a single vehicle may use my private driveway or street parking in front of my home. I expect seventy-five percent of my business to remain virtual, meaning the majority of business activity has no physical or environmental impact on the neighborhood nor a need for parking. The nature of the business ensures that there will be minimal noise and disturbance. No large fitness equipment will be used and all sessions will be private or in small groups avoiding the noise typically associated with larger fitness facilities. I will ensure that the home gym enforces strict safety requirements, including proper equipment maintenance, cleanliness and adherence to local health regulations. Additionally, I will ensure that the business does not exceed the conditions set forth for a conditional use permit and is in compliance with all specific requirements of chapter two oh five, article four of the zoning ordinance. The business will provide a unique personalized fitness service that is often difficult to find in larger commercial gyms. It will allow community members to access high-quality fitness and wellness services in a comfortable, low-key environment. It fosters community connection by bringing neighbors together to build a sense of camaraderie. Um it's accessible and inclusive, welcoming to people of all fitness levels, especially those who are uncomfortable and uncomfortable in traditional gyms. It's convenient in both location and timing. As a local mom leading a class, I understand the unique challenges and schedules of parents and caregivers. And lastly, it promotes physical and mental well-being. And if I hadn't mentioned it before all these bullet points, this is where where I feel that I can benefit the community. I believe my business will be an asset to the community, providing a beneficial service while minimizing any impact on the residential character of the neighborhood. I seek to continue to contribute to the public welfare of Oakmont by offering a convenient personal health solution to the community of which I am a nine-year member. I appreciate your consideration of this application. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the presentation. So I guess what the um, I guess what we want to talk about between ourselves a little bit too is it obviously is a home occupation. We have definitions of home occupation in ordinances. And there seems to be two of them. One that says home-based business, no impact or home occupation. So I guess our first decision is this, which which one of these does that impact? And then what kind of conditional uses are we concerned about? Or do we actually want to make conditions of any kind? It's, do you have, are there any license requirements to run a a business like this? I suppose not from your home.
No, there are.
There, okay.
And our HOA bylaws allow me to operate a business in our neighborhood as well.
Okay.
Um I.
You're saying it is okay with the HOA?
Yes, it is. Do you mean licensing, like in terms of, I I have a, I have an LLC and I'm registered to Convo.
Do you require like?
No, you have a fitness certification. You, it sounds like you have a BS in.
I do.
Education.
I do have a BS in exercise degree in sciences. Um I also have a certification through the American College of Sports Medicine.
Okay. Um I'm reading the uh section two oh five, four oh eight of the conditional uses. Um I guess the most, first one we would be concerned about would be noise and then also would be parking or disturbance to the to the neighborhood. Um so you did state that we know outside signage or appearances of a business.
Yes.
So that's good. Normal operations shall be seven AM to nine PM. Will you be able to agree to that?
Yes, I do have a question about whether or not because of the nature of the business and clients needing to workout earlier in the morning before their jobs or getting their kids to school. Would there be a way which to start off ready to get six AM?
What, what phase of this, that's a violation of this, you know, this is part violation, that's fearfully, this is um, that's not the condition use.
I actually had a question about the time restriction. Um I couldn't find in the definition of home-based business, no impact or in the conditional use provisions with the exception of the daycare where there's a limitation. So from seven AM to nine PM. So I don't know if that's in another provision of the code someplace, just in general, that's a rule, but I couldn't find the source of that.
It's two zero five dash four zero eight. Four two eight, yes.
Do you know what section? Because I pulled that.
Yeah, I had it here in a second, I just lost it. Um.
And I only saw it in the daycare parts.
It's letter O. Well, actually, no, wait a second. It's only daycare, you're already, it only involves daycare. You are correct. That's that, the seven AM to nine PM is only applicable to subsection of daycare. So to answer your question, Jamie, there is no time restriction. The code officer must have heard what they told me.
I mean, there would still be general sort of nuisance rules about noise.
There are, but they're probably for construction work, landscaping work. Um and that's mostly where it's addressed as a nuisance, you know, if everything's confined inside my house. So be it.
Okay. Well, then I guess that's a question. Are all of the activities confined to inside the house?
As long as your testimony was, it's all, at minimum, it's inside the garage.
In the garage.
Okay.
I ask the question, the garage door open or closed?
Yes, so on occasion I will open the side door. The van door, if you call it that. Uh on days like this, I'm not operating currently, but I would open it on a day like this when it's ninety-seven degrees and stifling in my garage.
Did you hear that yet?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And I'm usually very mindful of not opening the garage and the main garage door. Um especially not before seven AM.
Why would you open the main garage door?
In order to let airflow, more more airflow.
Oh, so the garage door would be open at times?
I have in the past, yes.
How about uh music and and um you know, if there's tempo and music and dance music or all of these, I know when people work out, they always play something.
Me too, but it it's a, it's a bunch of thirty-some and forty-some year old ladies who we just, we don't play the heavy metal. We usually play something pretty light and it's more conversational. I also have my children asleep upstairs while I'm doing these classes. Um my daughter's bedroom is right above the garage, so I dare not make enough noise to pick her up.
And Jamie, you're changing for the happy seven o'clock. Borough, this is really your side of the conversation.
Well, it would be an outward appearance of a business being run there with the garage door open and music and people dancing or whatever, or exercising.
You can also keep the garage dark.
How, how did this come to the attention of the borough? Apparently somebody complained, right?
There was a handful.
There must be some impact.
Hmm. We don't know if it was somebody's inconvenience parking further house, someone's parking further house or parking drive. We don't know, it just came to the code officer.
So you probably park your own vehicles in front of your house since your garage is used for the gym, right?
Yes, or in my, or in the driveway.
Yeah, well, I mean, one of the conditions of the conditional use is that vehicles are supposed to be parked on the lot. Not in the street, not in the shared parking community. So that's one thing to keep in mind. You said most of your clients walk there, but um and and I did ride by the backyard house and the pads and mine were big enough to accommodate a car. A lot of them are not long enough, deep enough, like mine isn't. I couldn't park a car in mine. But theirs looks big enough to accommodate two cars.
Yeah. There's street parking, there's street parking in the front though as well, right?
Condition is it's got to be on block.
Right.
Is that a condition? So they block two, so they park two blocks away.
Obviously, there's ways around it.
Yeah.
How many um, how many in your group sessions, how many?
Anywhere, well, anywhere from one to I've had five at a time.
And how many sessions a day or or a week we have typically?
One group session on Wednesday, Friday and Tuesday, Thursday. So four group sessions a week.
Sessions a week.
They're forty-five minutes.
And individual sessions in addition to that?
Yes. Uh.
And how many of the two? Estimate you have of those.
In person, um maybe two to three, because the majority of my business is done online.
So less than ten sessions a week.
Yeah, very easily.
First, you should give them the, you have a question. No, they're, that's a bigger than lawyer or concurs any particular house, she might did. Or.
So that was another question I had, the um, the number of people at a time. Because one of the default, there's a listing of sort of default, these do not constitute conditional uses or a home occupation or permissible home occupation. Um and it says uh private instruction of more than three people at a time. It's in section N eight. So I think that would just be another, if 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 it were approved, the classes would have to be limited to three people max.
I I read that, we both looked at that and then we thought maybe that applied to, what do we think?
It's a theory, you know, theory, the students, children, preschool, maybe that was education. But understand that if it had, if it had meant to imply like any sort of obstruction, cooking.
Yeah.
Yonel lessons, yeah.
Open to interpretation, but.
Well, even if we, if we think that it deserves a uh home, a conditional use for a home occupation, there are some things that are hard to meet, like you said, but.
Well, it it can be a no impact because it's, it involves no customers.
Yeah, it can't, it can't be that.
And not in home-based business.
Right.
So that's out of, out of consideration.
But I think what's, what's in front of us is an application for a conditional use for a home, uh home occupation, okay.
Right.
Goodness.
I was just gonna say, I had questions about, well, I think that also could be open to interpretation because I believe it says no impact beyond typical residential use. So, you know, I was just thinking, well, is this really beyond? You know, if an attorney had clients stop by to sign papers before they head into the office in the morning or um if a, you know, someone had friends over after school drop-off for coffee. So, you know, it just seems like that's sort of open to interpretation. Um but as you said, this is an application for conditional use, so um my understanding was you weren't considering whether or not it was a home-based business, no impact. Um.
Right.
And where is that even permitted? I couldn't find in the ordinance where that's even allowed.
Home-based business, no impact.
That's allowed anywhere?
It appears to be. It's just a definition starting to the chapter two oh five.
That's not really addressed anywhere else in the order, it's a lot in the definition.
Because I'm, I use the Chinese word, it's only home occupation, that's it. The secondary definition for me is why did it here?
I mean, this, this really seems to be the one deviation.
Which is fine, I mean, that it's encouraged, it's the process, the process is getting approval.
Well, we we can approve the uh the conditional use for home occupation, but we can't really waive any of the requirements in the ordinances. That that use shall not create greater vehi- vehicular or pedestrian traffic than that which is normal for residences in the neighborhood. That could be construed both ways, that, you know, the the neighbors that complained about in the first place, that would be the first place they're gonna go.
Remember, council ultimately has the final decision.
Yeah. I don't really have a problem with what she's trying to do as long as she's aware of, you know, there's there's people that look over your shoulder and scrutinize these things and they would complain again if they think, they would come back to us and say, why would you approve such a thing if she obviously can't meet this? So you would have to do your best on, be on your best behavior kind of deal, you know, just try to make sure it's minimal.
Right. Um would it be okay then just to have, like I said, there's usually only one vehicle at a time? If they were parking in my driveway, that shouldn't present issue at all. Correct?
Uh Christian said, I haven't walked, parked two blocks away.
Well, one of your vehicles would now have to park somewhere else, it's weather, you know, about. One of their vehicles would have to park.
I mean, unless there's.
That's really hard to say.
It gets fun in front of you. The, yeah. Concerned about.
We don't do permanent parking.
Yeah, absolutely not. And so in the actual house, unless you're doing the houses, if there's that in the parking house.
Well, just remember, you don't have a potential right for your house.
You do?
You do not have a potential right for your house.
Oh.
But we, we use that a lot, they use that a lot.
Do we know that that was what the complaint was, is parking?
I'll be frank, I don't know. The code officer brought it to our office manager's attention. My name's on the letter, but I didn't write it totally. But the convey was um well, they had. Uh they had one day, it was a five people, except for like an, except for a number of people, maybe, I mean, it's, it literally came out of nowhere.
Mm-hmm.
Especially if you've been doing it since pre-COVID. I had no idea.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't pre-COVID, it was very. Pre-COVID, she was somewhere else.
Yeah, that's true.
Pretty, yeah, pre-COVID, I was there also and that was spiritual.
It's not something we normally go look at and and I'll be honest with you, the provisions on occupation say no excessive deliveries to the household. Amazon didn't exist.
Right.
I owe you three deliveries a day.
Three deliveries?
No, no, I get like three deliveries a day for my place. It's so like times have changed and um.
Well, there could have been these four things, because that's.
It must have been the start of it, must have been the initial start of it, yeah.
Whoever wrote this up, wrote the three things, the four things that they had heard of.
What I understood was there were multiple complaints that all happened within the seat, week. And then the penitent came out of nowhere. Because I have been operating.
I have, I have seen it in a different circumstance, it was with somebody who was an attorney and they were working out of their home. And I think it was up on Thirteen Street years ago. And neighbors got upset and it was partly because many communities, this is my understanding at the time, that many communities don't allow any in businesses and residential communities. And Oakmont was always a bit unusual in that we did, we do. And so it could be to somebody who's lived elsewhere who said, well, wait, she's running a business, you can't do that in a home. And it's throwing it out there.
It's possible. We have no, we have no context on it. We have no context on the call, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um because I'm used to home occupations and we actually did a zoning staff review first. We didn't even go to the conditioning, started zoning here, it was simply a staff review. Here's your conditions, you meet these conditions, you convert and cloud, you have to sign two of them. Then one of the three, then one of the twelve, like one foot square sign at most. I have, you know, dental office, something like that. Just remember, council, just remember, or commission at the council level, when they get the approval which is section four, two zero five, four zero five. Now council may monitor other things, require anything that's consistent with the spirit and purposes of the chapter two. So the borough is always gonna go to council.
Right, right.
When the sound, the zoning officer may be able to tell us who called and why.
Yeah.
What doesn't matter, who called?
Not who, but why.
Oh, oh, so it would start.
They wouldn't why.
Yeah, I would think it's these, these four things they list. He just summarizes it as well. And I'm not sure where he got the hours of seven to nine PM.
They haven't been discreet of them, because it is listed there, but it's under date here.
Yeah, yeah. So they skimmed the ordinance and, yeah, we're right, please, don't.
The state didn't purpose, it's, 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 we just need more solid rationale here, this. Um they implement associated regulations of the comprehensive, you know, community goals, like home business plans. Um diverse housing options on terms of residency. Um opportunities to bolster the tax base, makes you some opportunities, thank you, this just, I think, checks the bottom of the system.
For business, plus pay tax. Yeah.
That's the immediate right question.
She does, she does pay her body. It is a vicious community.
Yeah, yes. Which that means residential and.
No interest.
Right. I think would be to our benefit.
But I think most cases consider that a residential community down there, with, with apartments, and all family.
So my assumption, when I read through this, was that the, the likely complaint was noise, because A says the business activity shall be compatible with the residential use of the property. Um, I think working out in a home gym is a normal residential use of your property, um. And with D, there are no outside appearance, we mentioned that opening the garage, that discloses the activity going on, but how do you know whether it's paying customers or just a group of friends who work out every morning? Um, C, we already talked about the business hours, um, so my assumption was that the primary issue was probably, um, noise detectable in the neighborhood. Um, but we've heard, you know, the testimony tonight that there are sleeping children upstairs, so, um. And I can't speak to the facts behind that, but that was sort of how I was viewing the complaint, or the, um, the violation right up.
But I would think noise that early in the morning would call attention to the, to the business too, it would be, it would be better if the, the noise and opening the garage were limited to afternoon type hours or something like that, so people wouldn't even know what was going on. An early in the morning, it's cooler, she probably wouldn't have the garage door open anyway.
Right, and for most of the year, I don't ever open the garage, because.
True.
It's cold.
Well, we, we can approve it with condition, our own conditions, can't we?
You can write amended.
We can recommend it with.
You can write, they can write condition to council, and have them consider conditions, such as. None, or?
Well, some, some way to limit, limit the potential of, of noise, uh, excessive parking, and, um, maybe even the hours of operation, or at least.
You just keep the door.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, I would, somehow, we, we, if we could put it into words that, um, the owner or op, the operator of the, of the home occupation would show consideration for, for the residential, so surrounding residential uses, by not opening, uh, garage access doors or main doors, you know, before, during certain periods or something like that, you know, from, uh, I don't know, when people were out there talking about it, six, seven, eight, that sounds really early to be, um, having, hearing noise. You know, music and noise on the street. If, but not, but even at night, that doesn't sound, nine o'clock's not very late either. So it seems like it would be early morning would be the big, the most, most obvious, that it was, you're running some kind of small business or dance group out of your garage. If, if we would limit it to before noon or something like that.
And Angela, the point addressed in section N, should it be limited to three people or less at a time?
Oh, that is home occupation, isn't it?
But if it's three, if it's more than three people, it has to fit into one of the use categories. I, I assume that's what it means, the following shall not be considered to be home occupations, and shall be limited to the districts in which they are specifically authorized as permitted uses, conditional uses, or uses by special exception. I, I, I mean, well.
Yeah.
Well, not only usage, uh, we can see it be home occupations, and shall be permitted. Okay, so we can't be considering this as a home occupation use of it involves more than three people in sessions, by the way, you can't read that, right? And it would have to qualify as a, I guess, a fit.
Oh, so it would have to be more than home occupation if it's more than three.
Yeah, I, I think that's what that means, is that how you brought that in?
Yeah, we're struggling with N eight.
Yeah, that's what I, that's how I read it, that if there were more than three students, and like, we said earlier, the question is, is this instruction of students, is this how that was intended to be applied? Um, I think arguably, yes, um, but, yeah, I think if there's, the way I read it was, if there's more than three students, then it has to fit into an authorized category for whatever zoning district that it's in.
Yeah. So then it would have to be a, be a, an occupation or some, some sort of. But it's the simplest thing would be, if it's in the group sessions, three, that'd be the simplest, so it could remain home occupation.
But health and fitness related establishments are a conditional use in the M X D as well.
Hmm. So you want to call this a health and fitness?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I don't know that necessarily the three limitation, the three, you know. I mean, we can do that as a condition of the conditional use application, if we feel strongly about that, I guess, it's not part of our recommendation, but I'm not sure that.
And health and fitness related establishment?
Health or fitness related establishment.
Which is completely silent on the number per people, they just can have a dumbfounded frame. What is this, section two zero five, four four four, what is looking at?
It still requires conditional use, but I'm. Put lower two, three, or five.
Four, four, four.
Yeah, I guess if, if a health and fitness business is permissible in a mixed use district, then that would be permitted then, as a conditional use, is that what that means?
Try to go back to.
I will go through the shame and quantity, for more than three people, for our recognition. In maybe, I don't, six o'clock has seen me, but they're related to me as well.
For, for having classes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least a group class.
I don't know.
Six, seven, K, we keep the doors and notes up close at four, seven.
Yeah, I don't like the door being open period, the big room, that is, I, I'm, and that to me just kind of makes it in your face.
Said that, being quiet in the mornings for other reasons, which makes sense, so, if we're trying to limit to service during early hours. And everything else in the ordinance points at seven o'clock, it's not, what, except that, it doesn't matter, for then, E. Four, seven, we can even look at the other hours.
We don't know where that came from, uh-huh, that.
That was specifically identified for daycare, childcare facility, we're running.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's where that is.
It's specifically under the provisions for daycare inside your home.
So that doesn't.
No, but I'm just looking at an hour, and you should say, keep, keep the doors closed before, or after nine.
Yeah, I like that.
Maybe before noon, if you want to hide the appearance that you're operating a dance, exercise room. Or eleven, or pick a number of it. That's the other thing, it, it, it can't have the outside appearance of, of a business use.
Yeah, well, just to say, that's signed, is that a point?
Yeah.
That was, right.
That if, or if, if, yes, I did, two or five, four or eight.
That's not working again.
Yeah, and you mentioned that, where did you see that? Was it you that mentioned that, the outside appearance?
Um. I did, at one point, um. That's in.
I remember seeing it somewhere too.
Well, so it's cited in, it's, uh, it's cited in the violation, there should be no outside appearance of a business use, and then I, I thought it was.
It's, it's in the definition of a home based business, excuse me, a no impact home based business, it's in the definition.
So that's not, that's not what we're up against there.
But it's referenced nowhere else in the federal code, except for that one, definitely.
But it's, it's kind of the gist of all the, all the ordinances.
Yeah, I worked with that, and I didn't see.
It doesn't say it specifically, but it's the gist of all these things.
So. I think for the home occupation, there can't be advertising or merchandise available. Um, nothing, it says no use of advertising signs on the premises to call attention to the fact that the home is being used for business purposes. But it doesn't say anything about the appearance of a business other than that.
I guess I was looking for some kind of a motion to, um, recommend the, uh, the conditional use for a home occupation with a couple of conditions.
I'll do that, let's, let me, let's write down what the conditions covering, how that motion.
No, no more than.
No more than three.
Three.
Get a class.
Uh. Three plus the instructor, so, uh, three, uh, clients per, per session. Maybe no, uh, doors, no doors open to the outside that would conduct noise before eleven A M.
But I guess we'll have them, right, if I'm not there.
I suppose you could.
I was saying.
No, okay, yeah, as long as, we can, as long as we can open up our door.
Sure, right, right, right.
Our kids are out there, I mean, ways before eleven A M, and.
But, but, but children are, are part of the neighborhood, like, appearance.
Yes, I'm just having a hard time understanding, um, because Dave and I work out at the garage together in the morning, and it's not part of the business, but we're, you know, we have the right to the peaceful enjoyment of our home, and if we want to work out in our garage, it's, it's, I went the side door open. It's not bothering anybody, then.
Well, the, 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 it was up to the outside during customer sessions.
During customers.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, you know, until, let, is that what you're, yeah.
I'm just trying to minimize the, the, the experience on the adjacent neighborhood.
Right.
And still allow her to have a successful business that people could still come to, so if they can come at six o'clock, they just have to really minimize it, and then the only other thing that could draw attention is the, is the vehicles. You know, if, if you could limit vehicles to no more than two per session, so, session, or.
Yeah, but there's never.
Get people to walk, or something, but, if, if we put it in there, then it, it will expand in the future to, to more. So that's the third thing I could think of, does anybody else have any ideas or comments? I don't want to be giving too restrictive, I, I want to, uh, they will have to agree to these conditions to get through the council.
I, yeah, I don't know how you.
And those are our recommendations.
Regulate, uh, regulate the car thing. You can't be, I'm, I'm not on board with the whole car thing, I mean, as, as long as it doesn't get out of control, in which case I'm sure we'll get more complaints and, um, I, I don't, I don't know how we would word that.
I honestly don't know. No more than two, no more than two customer vehicles per session.
So if they parked, they walked up, they wouldn't be bringing a veh, customer vehicle.
About within, six, seven, a few.
Take me, guys.
I, 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 I don't, you, you gotta make this something like in.
But I mean, that's my point, you can park across the street.
Sure.
They can park anywhere.
Well, yeah.
There's no, there's no shit to parking on both.
Yeah, I don't, I think the parking thing is hard to regulate.
Well, if you're, if you're limiting it to only three students at a time, then just by virtue of that, you're limiting it to three vehicles at most.
But of most of.
Just by virtue of them.
Most of what I'm getting is.
What about if, um, you limit, you limit it to three per session at most.
Yeah.
And two of the vehicles have to be parked in their driveway, that would only be.
Well, they have to park their vehicles somewhere.
Yeah, if you park it in the street, there are a lot of, yeah. I mean, if you're worried about the park, that's my solution, is.
Well, I'm, I'm reading, I, the you shall not create greater vehicle or pedestrian traffic than is, which is normal for the residences in the neighborhood. And all, and all the needs for the parking generated by the conduct of the home occupation shall be provided for upon the lot.
I know, I brought that up.
Yeah, so that's two. That's where I'm getting my two. They could both be on the lot, and there's cars to be on the street, as you said, to technically be within the orders.
I see, you, I mean, you work in the trade area, so.
Again, that's true, they, they have to.
If it's out of our control. Then we can.
Well, that's too subjective, how, 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 how does anybody say that, 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 that they can get complaints again, that they're creating greater vehicle, vehicular, pedestrian traffic than before?
Yeah, that's, that's.
It's, it's so vague, that's why I'm throwing the number.
Well, no, I mean, it's not vague that they haven't worked on a lot.
Yeah, that's not vague, right.
So that's kind of the hammer, if, if it gets out of control for her, then they're violating the ordinance, and the use could be stopping it. So she's gonna be very cognizant of controlling the, the car, the automobile thing, if you just keep it the way it is.
Well, we could write that in, that she would remain aware of two oh five dash four oh eight point J.
You could say parking shall be in accordance with.
Yeah.
Five, four oh eight.
And.
J.
Right.
I don't have.
But.
We gotta clean that up, we all got one.
We, we, we have.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a presumption.
Okay.
Um, the, your address, one twenty-nine First Street, are you in Edgewater, or are you in Bakersfield?
Edgewater.
So you're in Edgewater, so you have two sides of the street, one side's the park, and one side's residential.
Yes, or no?
You live right out the green space.
Yeah, that means it's curved out, yeah, so there's parking right across the street.
There is, there's also, always.
There's not a, um, anyone else's front street, it's.
Right.
It's public parking.
It is, and there's, it's an animal parking there.
Yes, hardly ever anybody crosses the street.
Right, right, so, I don't think that my business will present an issue with parking.
I do, or main cars.
Okay. I know where the front of your houses are, I don't know where the back is, what it's.
Yeah, it's the apartment area, it's the alleyways.
I haven't really, I don't go in the alleyways that much. Okay, so Steve, do you think you could put those three things into words again?
And is there a number for this application?
There is none.
Okay, um. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of conditional use application submitted by David and Brianna Hawkins with the following three. Submitted by David and Brianna Hawkins with the following three. Conditions, the conditional use, number one. Uh, no more than three clients per session. Number two. The doors to the exercise area shall remain closed until.
During customer session.
During customer sessions until eleven o'clock A M. And.
Parking shall be in accordance with.
Uh, one in the evening too, they, they.
I don't.
Doors shall remain, well, she put, customers sessions, uh, until after eleven A M. And. Parking, customer parking shall be in accordance with. Section.
Two oh five dash four oh eight.
Dash four oh eight J. J. I'll make that motion.
Um. I'm thinking about the evening too, there is no, she could go till two in the morning if she wants.
I love.
There's no, there's no nighttime restrictions.
Going there.
I, I forgot, that was another daycare, wasn't it?
Yeah.
How about, uh, before eleven A M or after? Ten P M or nine P M? Nine P M?
Nine P M is very.
And so the second condition would be. Doors to the exercise area shall not be open. Before eleven A M or after nine P M, during customer sessions.
Right.
During client training sessions.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
And that, cause you already have that our kids are maybe too much.
Well, they're allowed to, you know.
You're getting quite.
Yeah, that's part of residential.
Yeah, that's.
That's what you're set up for when you, uh. Perform head whipping boards.
Well, here, you're not allowed to have more than three children, that's right.
That's fine. Be fine. Uh, what was?
Go ahead.
What was the stipulation on the six A M start?
There was.
So I can start at six A M.
Yes. And why the doors, you know, just try to, I'm gonna keep it quiet. I'm sure, I'm sure, no one's up at six, they can't, they see anyhow, until they start moving their cars around to go to work and things like that, and then they wonder what's going on. Okay, so Steve made a motion, uh, do I have a second on that motion? Anne or Anne or Chrissy, can you second the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion as written, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, so it passes with those three conditions that you're. We recommend, yeah, we recommend the council that you get a. Conditional use for home occupation.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming in, sorry it took so long.
No.
We hadn't, obviously we hadn't worked through something like this before.
It's an interesting case.
It is.
My question is, what is the process look like after that, does it go to the zoning hearing board or?
You're gonna go, the council has two meetings in August, one's called the work session, which comes first, and that's gonna be August. Fifth. At that meeting, there's gonna have general discussion about it, and then they're gonna have the public hearing on August nineteenth. That's their formal action night. We've already set the legal notice, put the modern newspaper, so we've covered it so we can expedite the approval, so you get, you know, I am putting in the blog to have a position. Thanks, though.
Thank you.
Okay.
You should be there, but you should be there for, there for, there for both. Let's say both started seven o'clock on Tuesday, the fifth and the nineteenth.
I will, uh, we are out of town on the fifth, should I have someone here for us?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Anne come in on Zoom. You can watch it on Zoom.
I can log you in, I need to take off. Real work session, I mean, it's mostly this type of discussion, but the presentation we make, I would. You can say it at the work session, but you also bring it again to public hearing as well.
I think that. Okay.
Right.
What was that?
This, this does call to mind something, you know, how we were trying to get ahead of, uh, things that are happening in. As society changes and modern, modern things change and our order is become dated, this is almost one to revisit. There's gonna be, there's gonna be more home occupations, there'll be different, or.
There, there are, and, and maybe taking it out of the, that's a council decision, making it at the staff level.
Yeah.
So we're doing staff level approval back in nineteen ninety-two.
Yeah, so we may wanna revisit two oh five, four oh eight again, and, and think about. Other, other issues that are gonna come up and we'll be dealing like this.
Yep. So I just ask you just a pair of questions.
Uh huh.
Just based on what you just said, sort of revisiting, uh. Order of, what if somebody had a small clothing business out of their home, they were shipping? Would they require conditional use? Based on the wording of, uh, of.
They were making clothes.
They were, well, no, if, yeah, sure, say they were sewing clothes. In their home and then shipping, and there were, people noticed a large number of pickups and complained. Technically, would they have to come through the council?
Yeah, well, weren't you saying there are some of that, you know, before Amazon, there were, there were still stuff.
It's, it's, it's.
Excessive shipments.
There's provisions in there, it's, it's, it's hard to measure, but like only a certain percentage of the house can be taken over by.
Sure, it's right, yeah.
And you can get in the weeds in that discussion. It's gotta be really, I, I don't like, because we're designed for the professional office.
Right.
I said a lawyer, the real estate agent, uh, designer, planners. But it is expanded, uh, even before COVID, the. He was doing some site named Etsy, so.
Yeah, that's.
As he started that whole thing, doing things like, also it just. When it became quite obvious that. I needed four garbage cans, I'm a family of two.
Yeah.
Or, or the Amazon was coming, uh, UPS or FedEx, FedEx coming incessantly, that's not, that triggers a lot, but. That, that is all by the wayside, so it's, it's, and COVID proved the fact that you can work out your house. Nobody really knew about it. Some different texture or something, it's usually, it's a, it's based on volume and. I had, a person for their basement dental office. And no, and it's, it works, it's. That person's fire, it's old, it's old bracket, so I, I give that rule back in nineteen ninety-three. It was in pine, and that person just put the business up for sale. So real, real residential with business in the basement. So, but again, if a dental office could fit inside of the house. Two chairs. Two chairs, that, but here, here you have a broken chair.
Yeah, shit, two.
Right.
Take your, the times are changing.
Yeah. Yep, so that might be something.
A lot of these provisions work. It's just a matter of the approval process, if you have to think about.
And, I mean, if it gets out of control, that would come under the new six.
Right.
If it gets too noisy or anything like that. That'll be the other method for, and. Controlling what might go on.
And, and I think, unless it's changed, if I took home occupation for a suburban union versus a urban union like us. Our strategy is the same as suburban. Which really set the blue out red flags, we see five cars in the drop at six o'clock in the morning. Not upon, specifically.
Okay, I'll put it on there as something we might wanna consider, if, if our workload starts to remain light this summer, then we, uh, we work.
Good.
Okay. All right, I'll take a motion during the meeting, unless somebody else has something they wanna talk about tonight. Motion, anybody?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those favor?
Alright.
Motion is adjourned, we'll see everybody in August, take care. Bye, thank you.
Thank you so much.
For you all.
Thank you.